You ready? Okay. Good evening and welcome to the City of Groton Special Committee of the Whole for Monday, November 18, 2024. It is a joint meeting. We have Zoom and we're in person. City Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Hedrick, Deputy Mayor Depot, Counselor Patterson, Counselor Piazza, Counselor Sheffield, and Counselor Norris are present.
Okay, thank you. So, new business referrals. We're gonna start with the ARPA review. Ron?
So, going through, there was a question that was asked last week about the obligation piece for year end, and if we were to do some sort of program internally, does that meet the definition? I did reach out to Southeast Chicago Cog and also another local municipality, just kind of going back and forth with them with this question, just because of the way that it's worded. They were both in agreement that if it was done internally and not allocated to a sub-recipient handling it, meaning a third party, if it went to a sub-recipient, that would meet the obligation piece, and then they could in turn give out those grants as the beneficiary would be receiving it. However, with us doing it internally, the businesses receiving those grants would be beneficiaries and not sub- recipients. So, it kind of doesn't meet that obligation. So, talking with the mayor and after last week's meeting and some of the discussion, and knowing how important this program is to the group, I'm gonna offer up kind of a solution, hopefully, that will help with this. I don't have time this calendar year before the end of December to do it, but like we talked about, we can, I'd bring it back to the council to do a reauthorization of some of those capital funds that we're using for other things for ARPA, meaning from the fire, from the parks and rec, and create a grant program that would kind of fall into the bucket that we were looking to achieve with the ARP funds. However, it'll be just out of repurposed capital funds, and then that way, we don't run up against the time limit on the other side of it. Whereas if we did have that grant program in at the $100,000, and say, we only had 50,000 worth of beneficiaries or applicants that were approved, that other 50,000 would have to be turned back as unspent ARPA money. So, I think we accomplished both things by doing this. But like I said, it won't happen until next calendar year at some point, but we'll be bringing it back to you if that is okay with the council.
Okay, I'll open that up for discussion. Deputy Mayor Depot?
Thank you, Mayor. We did talk about that when we were authorizing the fire truck, I think, was when that conversation kind of came up. And I do like that solution, because after our meeting last time, I did think about that. What if we don't have enough applicants? Even if we could administrate it, like, that's a possibility. So, that could cause a problem. So, I do like that solution. I think it's fine to wait till the next calendar year. Also, I know that everyone has a lot on their plates right now. But yeah, so I think that that solution makes sense.
And I will say, that was one of the fears with even having that sub-recipient. If we didn't have that grant money spent, we would end up losing it and having to go back. So, that was one of the issues there as well, so.
Anyone else? Counselor Sheffield, was your hand up?
Yeah, thanks, Ron, for, like I said, doing the research of what other municipalities are doing to salvage this, because this is clearly important for our community to keep these for small businesses. So, hopefully, you know, the effect of rolling over into next year, that will work out. Now, is there any potential snags that can play into this? What, you know?
Not that I can foresee. Obviously, everything will have to be approved by council, because we will be repurposing capital funds that would be set aside for capital and be moving those over for this program. So, it would just be just approval process and getting council backing throughout the way, but I don't see any other.
Any, Counselor Piazza?
Thanks, Ron, for all you do. So, I just, this is just for my own, so I understand it. So, reading when the ARPA thing first came out. So, we're supposed to have this all planned by December 31, 2024. So, since we swung the money back over, but we're gonna roll into the next calendar year, that date doesn't hurt this in any way for us to move things around correctly.
So, what it does with the new schedule that's there, you'll see that that small business grant has been removed as an ARPA project, and we've inserted it with those other projects, and I'll just keep it to like the fire truck being one of those. That wasn't really a part of the project that would be paid out of capital. So, we'll end up, it won't affect the ARPA from this standpoint for that grant, because we're gonna use it with capital funds and repurpose them in the future. So, it'll fall outside of the ARPA. But we'll follow the same guidelines that was set as far as what we wanted that grant to do if it was under ARPA.
So, it's a different set of funds?
Right.
And so, therefore, there are no expiration limits per se. Now, when we set up the program, we'll put some limits on there to meet the intent of the ARPA. The good news is, if, since it's on our own money, if we don't distribute all the funds, similar to what Deputy Mayor Depot was talking about, that money just rolls back into the general fund, and we don't lose that money.
Okay, so.
Does that make sense?
Yes. With that said, so when I look back at the color-coded graph that we have here, so, I know we're speaking about the small grants, but similarly to the other ones that have been pulled back, the document control room and the rain gardens, we're doing the same with those also?
As of right now, we're not doing the same with those. Those are projects that have just been pulled off the list for certain reasons. The rain gardens was because there's another grant associated with that. So, then you become with grant matching, and we didn't want to get into that piece of it. And then the document control room was a project that was in the basement that couldn't really get, hasn't been finalized as to what that looks like at this point, and that's why we've alternated projects with like a lot of those park improvements that we came up with, the restrooms, with hopefully, the roof and the siding and those types of things, because those are projects that are more ready to go.
Okay, so I see this is revised November 8 this year. So, just refresh my memory on how do we trickle upward, how, this doesn't have to go back up to the top for approval, it's just, we're just repurposing this money, correct?
So, this is one of the items that we would amend that original resolution to update the list for this list as opposed to that original one that was approved back in September, I believe, of 23.
That's what we're hoping to do today.
Yes. And again, this doesn't obligate anything. It just puts all of our projects in one spot. And again, if a project looks like it's gonna go over or under, we can still, within this, move money around without having to come back for approval, but this should be the final list of all ARPA projects.
Okay, alright.
So, we went to the attorney, and the attorney agreed with amending the list to add an updated spreadsheet to be current, and then we're keeping all the projects on there, the ones we added and the ones that were originally on that we decided not to fund. And then that'll be a list, and that'll be the total list. And then, just like we've done to date, every project will come to council for approval. So, this list is nothing more basically than a shopping list or a list to keep track, and the individual approvals will come from a mayor and council meeting with the individual resolutions. Okay, so, let's talk about a small business grant that's up. Is there, what I'm looking to do for this is to rescind this tonight. Is there any further discussion, because we kind of talked about this already? Okay, then I'll take a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of 11/18/2024?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion of second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Okay, and then the amend list, this is basically amending the resolution, the original resolution, to remove the old spreadsheet and put the new spreadsheet on. So, is there any discussion with that? Okay, hearing none. I'll take a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of, correction, November 18, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion of second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries. And then, Bill, if you could come up. So, Public Works, there's a line item that is on that list, which is the municipal basement plumbing. This is an issue that recently came up. So, everybody has this backup material in your packet. I'll also pass out a hard copy. So, in the recent past, we've had some plumbing issues. So, for those, I think, I think it was, I think, this council, not this council, maybe the council before, approved the renovations down to the locker rooms and the basements, in the men's and women's locker rooms. Since then, not because of the renovations, but timeframe-wise, since then, we've had some plumbing backups and some issues. There's been some short-term fixes that we've tried, and just, they're not working to any avail. Bill came on board, and with his background in construction, he reached out to some people, got some quotes and looked at things, and had some people come in and look, and the municipal basement plumbing is on the list. So, Bill, I'll let you go through this.
So, for what we had down there, the issues at hand, like Mayor was saying, we had just septic starting backing up. They were having issues with clogging. Just the system that they had wasn't working all together, and then with the dates, everything that we had, it was, when they came out, we had people coming in, there was, made it known that there was inadequate pitch towards all the plumbing. Nobody's gonna want to have a certain degree pitch with your pipes to get it to go out to wherever you want to. And so, with that being said, with the quotes I'd gotten that came out, originally, what there was, they were more sectional, like sectional fixes, as opposed to what this company, Savvy and Sons, had proposed out, where they were looking to reline the entire piping system, which essentially gives an entire set of new plumbing based off of the old. So, with that pipelining, what happens is, it gives the pipe wall thickness, which is wearing down. It's an older pipe, and along with the inadequate pitch, adds to it, allows for essentially brand-new plumbing coming through. And then also, within that, what they're doing is, we switched from a high-flow to a low-flow system at some point in time. We'll be going back to a high-flow system with the toilets, everything else. The only issues that were presented that we came up with was, if we're going back to a high-flow, would there be any separation from liquids and solids, which could then cause a clog eventually at some point in the line? But they said with the new lining, they said that's what's gonna take care of that to help guide everything going through. So, you shouldn't have any real separation switching back into a high-flow system. Now, at the end, it should, hopefully, knock on wood, be what we have after everything with what people came in, did, got the different quotes, and people coming through diagnosing problems, be what, kind of alleviates the issue.
Okay, I'll open the floor for discussion. Deputy Mayor Depot?
Thank you for explaining that for us, those of us that are not plumbers. The proposal says that this price is only good for five days from receipt, which is 11/4. Is the price on this still good?
Yeah. We've, I've been in contact with them. This is more they knew that we were coming to. I've kept them updated when we had, and they gave us all that for this. I've just tried to make sure this is going to council, keeping them informed as they're going back and forth. That's all. Everything is, if need be to make it, if you prefer, I can have them date it again.
Just so everybody's clear, on this process, because of the amount, we originally received a quote from them, we did put this project out to bid. It did have a mandatory pre-bid meeting. They were the only ones to show for that pre-bid meeting. So, we still, based on the timing of everything, we allowed the process to play out. We did have an original quote from them, so we kind of knew a ballpark of where it would be. So, that's why there's stuff in the RFP about the timeline of the pricing and how long they have to keep it for, so.
And also, one of the things that drove this was prevailing wage and things like that, right?
Correct.
So, we originally thought it was gonna be less, but then, once you get to a certain threshold, then you gotta look at prevailing wage, and we had to include that, and that's what got us to this number.
Along with the federal funds, too. It dictates that you have to have a prevailing wage.
Okay, and so, the other thing I was gonna ask, so it has a stipulation here that any project started after November 1st is subject to price increases due to weather? Do we anticipate that that's going to be a problem because it's internal and?
No, again, based on, it was actually a formal bid. They just included this in their bid packet as kind of their backup.
Okay. And then, my last question is, the resolution says the project costs not to exceed $119,559, but on the ARPA list, it only designates $110,000 for it?
The reason for that is because we will contract the 110. There's a contingency built into the price in the resolution, which wouldn't be part of the contracted. So, that would not be, quote-unquote, obligated from the ARPA. It would, if it does have a contingency, we would end up paying out of operating funds or our capital funds.
Okay, I just.
Also, do you want to talk about the bond fund concept of this list?
Yeah, so, within this list, things can always be moved up or down, like we kind of talked about, like with a bond fund project. You're just approving the projects in dollar amounts. This resolution actually should have added on there when you get to tonight for the resolution, to paid from American Rescue Plan Act, Recovery Fund Acts, and capital, capital funds, because a contingency would be, because we're only gonna be able to contract for ARPA, the original purchase price. If there's a contingency come February, we're not gonna be able to use the ARPA funds, because we would not have it technically obligated by that point in time. So, we should add in capital funds for the funding source.
So, when we make the motion, can we just move as amended?
Yes.
To add that piece?
We will.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Counselor Sheffield?
Yeah, that was just my follow-up, is that we'd have to break that $10,869 into operating or capital funds, separate from the, from the ARPA in the resolution.
Yeah, and you could, all you would really need to do is just add, because we've done this on other projects, we've had multiple funding sources, that you wouldn't have to designate the dollar amount coming from each one. You could just add paid from the American Rescue Plan Act recovery funds and capital funds, and that'll cover the both of the funding sources. And then hopefully, there is no contingency funds needed, and it's a mute.
Any other, Counselor Sheffield?
Again, going back to that pre-bid on this contract, so with that, it's, wouldn't be necessary to have other bidders seeking to do the work, since the pre-bid process was accepted? How does that work out?
I mean, normally, we would like to have multiple bids, to have a true competitive bidding. In this case, we did have a quote prior, and there was a reason from where the quote was to where the bid came in. So, we knew that they were not just throwing a number out, knowing that they were the only one that was at the pre-bid meeting. We could justify that number. If we couldn't justify that number, we wouldn't be bringing it to you.
Any other, Counselor Piazza?
Thank you, Mayor. So, I know many times when we have these bids, so you explained about more than one bid, but with that, so, have we worked with this company before? Do we have any recommendations or reviews or anything like we usually do or we usually ask about?
So, right now, from just what I had gone out from, any companies I've dealt with in my past, the one actual commonality between everybody was they all referred them. When there's something that they couldn't do, or they needed to get done, they called them. That's how it came to be with that. And then, any reference checks that came off with what jobs they've done, that they've gotten to, the majority of their businesses are referral. I actually went to an open house they had, just to see what it is that they do, the techniques that they use. They have all modern equipment. They're very, very versed on minimal cuts. So, there's minimal damage or invasiveness that goes down a lot of what they do. They try to make it pretty much single-cut, seamless, if possible, so that there's no damage to anything else going on, especially if you've got delicate or older buildings that are going on. They also have, they're one of the sole contractors for the plumbing within, there's a company called CBNA out of France. They run large resorts like, what is it? Trying to remember, the ones that was real big in the Bahamas, I'm drawing a blank now. But that's who they're contracted by. I think it's Atlantis. There you go. The Atlantis Resorts. They run all their plumbing systems, deal with any fixes, issues, tanks, also coming through. And they've, I mean, some of the stuff they've done is, it's pretty remarkable coming through for a company, a kind of small-town Connecticut. So, it's, they've definitely got the backing on it for some of the stuff they've done.
Now, what is the lining made of? What's the material? Do you know?
So, they gave it was a PVC fiberglass type mix. That's what comes in, and it's hardened, it's a UV hardener. So, when they go to a certain extent, it comes out, and what the UV hardening does is makes it a stronger, more durable product, lasts a lot longer.
So, it's basically, they're gonna sleeve it within the piping?
Pretty much.
Okay.
Yeah, they're re-sleeving.
Right.
That's just what it comes, just re-sleeving, re-lining.
Right. Right. Well, I only say that because I had an issue when I lived in Virginia. When they fixed that part, like you say, one segment, then another part went, and then the ground sunk there. So, when you say they're doing it instead of segments, I like that idea.
The biggest draw to this was because anywhere else that I went to, it was kind of pieced together.
Yeah.
So, it was, they were very, this is the one spot that has to be fixed, this is it. Usually, when you get to something, especially with it breaks down CCTV on here, another city throughout.
Right.
There was a consistency in the piping throughout was not where it needed to be, and that the pitch was inadequate. And the only way to truthfully get to where you'd want with spending the kind of funds is redoing system from A to B.
And do we have a, like, a lifetime expectancy of the lining at all? Like, about, or is this something we're gonna look at? 30 years down the road, 10 years down the road?
The way it was expressed to me was, I won't be around when we need to look at it.
Okay. What's our pipes actually made of? Our, the original piping? Is it iron, PVC? What is it in the ground?
It's cast?
Because I would think so, because it's probably, because they talk about scaling in there, so I'm thinking, I bet it's iron, and that, because they're talking about rooting, probably going through it. They would have to cut away if they have that problem before they actually sleeve it. So, that's, it's just a, for knowledge question. Alright, thank you.
Okay, Deputy Mayor Depot?
Sorry, I have another question. It says they're expected to start it on December 1st and not finish until January 31st. What are we, are we providing any accommodation for the police department, because their locker room's gonna be shut down? Because they have a locker room upstairs, right?
So, we actually have, when this was kind of noticed, we have down there, I set up essentially just temporary changing rooms and locker room. So, you've got a separate changing room and locker room in the old ULC rooms that we had downstairs. So, we took everything out, put lockers in there, did everything else that we could, just to make it as comfortable as you could for the time being while this issue's being addressed.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, I'll take a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of November 18, 2024?
So moved. Second?
We have a motion of second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries. And I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
We have a motion to adjourn. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Counselor Norris? We have a motion to adjourn?
So moved?
No, we have one to move. Are you in agreement with adjourning?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Okay, it's unanimous, and we are adjourned. So, we will move straight into the mayor and council meeting? Thanks, Ron. Thanks, Bill. Alright, let me scroll down. Alright, you ready? Okay. Good evening. Welcome to the City of Groton Mayor and Council Meeting for Monday, November 18, 2024. This is a joint, this is a joint meeting via Zoom and in person. With that, Clerk McCurran, please call the roll.
Mayor Hedrick, Deputy Mayor Depot, Counselor Patterson, Counselor Piazza, Counselor Sheffield, and Counselor Norris are present.
Okay, thank you. Please stand and salute the flag.
We salute the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dismissed, Your Honor.
Counselor Norris?
If I may add that I may have to step out for a moment, in that case, I would go off video.
Okay, when you step out, we'll just record when you're off and then when you're on, in case we need you for a vote.
Thank you.
Roger. Okay, next thing is recognition of awards and memorials. Turn this over to Mary to present the Groton City Haunted Trail winners. Before you do that, real quick, I want to do a quick shout-out to Groton Utilities. We had a power outage throughout the City of Groton and part of the Town of Groton this evening, and they were very quick to identify it down around trails, corners, and they verified make safe, and then they set up switching and was able to restore power fairly quickly. So, I do want to say thank you to Groton Utilities. And with that, Mary, I'll turn it over to you.
Alright. Good evening, Mayor and Council. As all, some of you know, we've done a haunted, well, we've done a scarecrow trail for the last four years. This year, we decided to make it a haunted trail, so more people could participate. We had 13 houses entered. We did our trail, so people could drive around and see the different houses decorated for Halloween. We had voting through monkey, no, survey monkey, and so, tonight, we're gonna honor our three winners in our different categories. So, most creative decoration winner was number 10, 154 Baker Avenue. I believe they've won before, too. So, next, picture of you, and there's your little trophy. Congratulations. So, our creepiest house decorating was number 5, 36 Meach Avenue. That was the one with the skeletons coming out of the ground, crawling up the house. And our silliest decorations was the house number, entry number 2, 79 Chestnut Hill Road. They did a Pac-Man thing. They've also been a repeat winner. They've done great with the scarecrow trail in the past, too. Just want to thank all the families and residents that participated in our event, and we're ready to get some holiday light entries into the office, so we can start that on the, I believe it's the 4th of December. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Okay, any other recognitions, awards, and memorials? Counselor Piazza?
I also want to recognize the Groton City Police Department, sorry, Fire Department. Police are great, too. They were there. So, yesterday, I believe it was, I saw a police car roll across my, across my house, and then a fire truck, and then another fire truck. And I don't know what it really had to deal with. I don't think it was somebody ill. I'm thinking that maybe it was possible burning, because the people crossed the street who knew, probably didn't know, and I saw they had an open fire a few days ago, before the band came in. So, that's what I'm thinking. I apologize if that's not true. But anyway, what I wanted to say was, there was two small boys that were, they played together, they ran down, so of course, they're looking. They're very excited about the fire trucks. And after they were all said and done, before the police, the police officer had left, but before the fire department, they allowed them to come and look at the trucks, and then look inside, and beep the horn, and gave them the fire hat, and the, those boys were so tickle pink, and I was just, so I just want to say kudos for them for recognizing them and not shooing them off. And that was really, I think, you know, prompts children who say, wow, you know, like we do with the police, but also, you know, bond them, to say, we do good things, and you know, we're here for you, too. So, I thought that was great.
That's great. I do want to segue off that, remind everybody in the City of Groton, we do have an open burn ban. So, no open flames, no fire pits, no burning of leaves, no grills. I've got a question about, what about a gas grill? Gas grill's an open flame. Something could blow in and blow off, that's caught on fire, and then you could have a fire. So, but we do have, did declare a state of emergency and issue a fire ban. We did it in the City of Groton, along with the Town of Groton as well. And then, once the governor, once we get some water, some rain, and things are safe again, then the governor will release his, and then we'll relax ours, and we'll let everybody know. things are safe again, then, uh, the governor will release his and then we'll relax ours and we'll let everybody know. Any other recognition of awards and memorials? Okay, with that, receipt of citizens petitions, comments. Receipt of citizen petitions is a portion of the council where the council welcomes comments from its citizens. To address council, please sign a sheet on the table at the front of the meeting room. When you're recognized, please approach the podium, clearly state your name and address. Each presentation should be limited to five minutes or less. And citizens should, if possible, submit emailed or written comments. Presentation should be related to matters pertinent to the City of Groton. City councillors will only ask questions in order to clarify the speaker's presentation and can respond during response to citizens petitions portion of the meeting. Do we have anyone signed up?
We do, Mr. Robert Hager.
Okay, Mr. Hager? You have the floor, sir. You can continue, you can start speaking.
Good evening. Uh, I'd like to, uh, I've talked previously about some issues I've had. Uh, I kind of want to give an overview and group them together. And, uh, you can always think of it as a mission statement, which is an independent civilian review board, as described by Benedict House Bill six zero zero four. That is an act containing, an act concerning police accountability is needed for the City of Groton Police Department because, one, police departments are not capable to conduct thorough, complete, accurate and objective investigations into civilian complaints. Given inherent conflict of interest related to these investigations. And two, members of the civilian review board should be elected, not appointed, to ensure that the civilian report is not affected by political considerations which may occur if members are appointed by the mayor and approved by city council. My experience with several members of the City of Groton Police Department and Mayor Hedrick, over the past three years, are the basis of my opinions on this matter. In the coming months, I will go through these experiences in detail, the numerous ways in which City of Groton police officers have undermined public confidence. For today's meeting, I'm providing four documents. The first one is an activity log for an incident. The incident is twenty-one, one, four, seven, four, three. In that activity log, it's the, uh, the second part of that document. At the bottom, there's a modified statement which says caller reported to X O two, Avery Point baseball coach being harassed. What is the context in which this call occurred? I have been communicating with the Yukon Avery Point Athletic Director after a collegiate baseball player urinated in plain sight of my son and me during a game at Fitch High School. The player's coach was a Yukon Avery Point employee. The second document is an email from Captain Lido. In this email, she makes several comments. She says she was in Ms. Hill's office on another matter. Someone called Ms. Hill about suspicious activity. There was concern because of previous issues. She gave the information to dispatch. So my question would be, why is a call about suspicious activity being handled as harassment? What was the factual basis for this accusation? The third document is the police report for twenty-one, one, four, seven, four, three. In reading that police report, the second paragraph, second and third paragraphs, this call about suspicious activity includes several statements, some of which are not true. We've talked a little bit about this in the past. Twenty emails in two days is mentioned in that police report. That's an incident that never occurred. There's also a statement about, quote, took a picture of one of the players in the woods who Hager believed was urinating, end quote. To be clear, I never emailed the former athletic director twenty-eight times in two days. And I did not take a picture of a baseball player, quote, in the woods, end quote, as previously discussed. So how did these false slanderous and not substantiated statements make it into the police report? Did Officer Brodowitz deliberately put these false statements into his report to embellish it? Even after his investigation showed that the statements were, quote, not substantiated, end quote? Did he do so to benefit Yukon Avery Point and its employees? Did he do so to protect himself, the Groton Police Department and/or the City of Groton? Why did he make no reference in his report to the fact that the statements attributed to Mr. Ratchford at the beginning of his report were, and his words, not substantiated? Did Captain Lido tell Officer Brodowitz to handle this incident in a certain way? Why were body cameras not activated by multiple officers on the day of the incident except while interacting with the man? Were the officers trying to protect themselves and/or Yukon Avery Point employees by acting in ways to avoid the collection and documentation of incriminating evidence? All of these actions, I believe, constitute police misconduct. Harassment was never substantiated because it didn't occur, as documented by, uh, by Officer Brodowitz in his police report. So there's plenty of motivation for the former and current chief of police and Mayor Hedrick to obstruct my access to information related to this incident when requested under stream information and to undermine the handling of the civilian complaint related to this incident. The final document is the police report twenty-three, I'm sorry, twenty-three, twenty-four, oh, three. And in this statement, Mr. Ratchford states he does not, quote, remember saying twenty emails in two days, end quote. He also did not, quote, knowingly provide false information concerning Mr. Hager.
Okay, please wrap it up, your time is up.
Uh, I will.
Please conclude.
I, I will continue this subsequent meeting, but you, you have beseined what I wanted to say.
Okay.
I'll talk more next.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hager. Are there any questions to clarify? Deputy Mayor Depot?
Is there anything, this is a clarifying question too, for the mayor. Is there anything in our charter or our ordinances that give the city council the authority to investigate actions of the police department?
Not to my knowledge.
Has this gone through the proper channels in the police department supervisory wise in terms of the individual that the complaint is against?
Yes, there was, uh, Mr. Hager, uh, cited a civilian complaint and then they were investigated. And at some time, we had outside counsel, uh, do the investigation.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. We will move on to response to citizen petitions, comments. Open the floor, council. Deputy Mayor Depot?
My only response is, um, per your, um, response to my clarifying question. I don't see, um, any action that the council could take on this specific item. As I encourage with all residents, um, we have a police and community together committee that is a more open forum with community members and with members of the police department, including the police chief, where, um, there is time for residents to ask questions or, um, make complaints. We've had people come make complaints at the police and community together meetings, um, obviously in a respectful manner. Um, but the police chief and captain are usually there and, um, sometime other, other, uh, representatives of the police department. And I, um, as this body doesn't have, uh, direct oversight of the day-to-day operations of the police department, I think that would be a more appropriate venue for this type of, um, discussion.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? All right, hearing none, we will move on. Approval of the minutes, take a motion to approve the mayor and council meeting minutes of November fourth, twenty twenty-four.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion of second, are there any corrections to those minutes? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Uh, opposed, extension, motion carries. Take a motion to approve the committee of the whole meeting minutes for November twelfth, twenty twenty-four.
So moved.
Second.
Are there any corrections to those minutes? We have a motion of second, are there any corrections to those minutes? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Okay. Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to communication reports. Uh, Counselor Patterson? Okay, Counselor Piazza?
Nothing to report.
Counselor Sheffield?
Nothing to report.
Okay, Counselor Norris has stepped out. Counselor Norris, are you still there? Okay, Counselor Norris has stepped out. Uh, Deputy Mayor Depot?
Thank you, Mayor. On, um, Veterans Day, I attended the ceremony here, um, in the auditorium with the, um, sub-vets, the sub-vets run it every year. And, um, and I say the same thing every year. I think as community members, um, to come and honor the veterans that attend that event. You know, they gave, including the mayor, who was also a veteran, um, gave a lot of their time to serve our country. And I think that, um, in any way that we can spend a little bit of time giving back or saying thank you or at least, um, supporting them, even just to show up every once in a while to a ceremony, um, and support them in that way. Uh, the sub-vets are currently, I believe, still collecting turkeys for Thanksgiving. And they also feed people for Thanksgiving. So if you're looking for a way to serve some veterans this year, that's a good way to do it. And they're a great organization and they work really hard to, um, help the community and to support local veterans. Um, so I just wanted to say thank you to them for having the ceremony and, and doing all of that, um, in the community. And to that, and also there are a ton of nonprofits collecting toys. There's the Tommy Toy Phone Fund, United Way works with them, um, as well as several other organizations. You can literally just go on Facebook and, and post toys for Christmas or something. And, and there's tons of charities around here. So if you're looking to give back for Christmas or Thanksgiving, please seek out a local charity because, um, you know, there's a lot of families who could use some help this season. And I think, um, you know, if we could all give a little bit, it would, um, help our community out. That's it.
You want to talk about Friday?
This Friday is food box distribution at, I guess I should stop calling that because it's a mobile food pantry. But, um, the mobile food pantry at St. John's Christian Church is at twelve-thirty. If you cannot, um, make it there, please call the clerk's office or the mayor's office and they will connect you. I deliver in the Groton, Groton City area and, um, to usually people who are homebound or unable to get there. So if you need food, we have food for you, we will get it to you if you need it. And that's all.
And the number to the, uh, mayor's office is eight six zero four four six four one zero three. And your four one zero two. And the clerk's office is eight six zero four four six four one zero two. Counselor Piazza?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to, uh, feed off of Deputy Mayor Depot's thing, just to announce to everybody. And so Ocean State Job Lot every year does buy in a coat for forty dollars. And then they give you a forty dollar store card. And then, um, also too, there's a promo when you buy toys that they also give you. I think it's a gift card also. So, uh, cause where I work, we usually do drives for social services. We also do drives and I try to put that out by, at Nextdoor app and also on Facebook because it's a win-win situation. So whether you need monies for Christmas yourself, you're helping some veterans and homeless and also children who don't have, and we always have a list from social services where we get to buy toys and clothes for them. So, um, you know, it's not promoting Ocean State Job Lot, but it's a wonderful thing that they do. So if you want to do a win-win situation, get a coat or toys or whatever, and then you'll have your own store card. You can use it for yourself or for others.
And Sub-Vets is at Forty School Street and they're also online, Facebook. Uh, if you want to contact them, they could always use help on Thanksgiving Day. And it's in, they have a tremendous team down there. It is a well-oiled machine. Uh, the lady that runs it comes in from Texas every year to, uh, take the volunteers and, and they deliver probably close to thirteen hundred meals on that day. And then the Tommy Toy Fund, uh, if you want to support a local business is doing it on the seventh of December from twelve to, I think it's twelve to six, Satellite Brewing Company is, is collecting donations for the Tommy Toy Fund. So, that's that. At some point, we'll need, uh, you and me and the chief will need to get together to go through. Okay, then go ahead.
Sorry, I forgot, I forgot to add that. So the chief of police was on vacation. Uh, he has come back, so, uh, once we're able to meet together, we are moving forward on the parking regulations and what regulations are going to be on which streets. And I think I said this previously, we did get a lot of data and input from residents and that's really helpful in letting us know what people want. It also, um, you know, gives us ideas. As I always say, we can't, just the six or seven of us come up with all the good ideas. So it's helpful to have resident input on those types of things. So I'm hoping, um, maybe by the next committee meeting to at least have something. That's the second.
Well, yes, we should, oh, by the next committee meeting, yes. I agree. Okay. Committee referrals, are there any committee referrals? Okay, hearing none, we will move on to new business. Counselor Patterson, R dash twenty-four dash eleven dash one forty-nine.
Therefore, therefore be it that the mayor and council authorize and approve a donation of eight hundred dollars and no cents to Premium Ballers, thirty-one Central Avenue, Groton, Connecticut, to be used as a basketball scholarship for residents of the City of Groton. I so move.
Second.
We have a motion of second, this is discussed, committee of the whole. Excuse me, is there any additional discussion? Deputy Mayor Depot?
I just want to thank the, um, the gentleman who runs this association and, um, the student that came to speak with us. It did make a big difference that they came in person because we kind of didn't know what this program was or what it was for. And they brought photos and, um, I just want to commend him for helping the community and doing, having a nonprofit that serves the community. And, um, again, back to my Christmas thing, even if you don't have a multimillion dollar nonprofit, you can still make a difference in the community as he's doing with his, you know, he's got, uh, you know, tens of students. It's not, it doesn't have to be a hundred children all at once. But you can change the lives of a few people and it makes a big difference in the community, so thank you.
And I did reach out to him with the points of contact, uh, the, the website, the point of contact, the cell phone number and the email address for Groton Little League and for Michigan Youth Football. So I told council and him that I would do that. He was grateful and he is now going to go off and do good things, more good things. Any other questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, extension, motion carries. Uh, resolution R dash twenty-four dash eleven dash one five zero, Counselor Piazza?
Thank you, Mayor.
I know, you got to scroll down.
Yes, I do. I thought it was off a page or something. I had to go back up. There it is. Okay. Therefore be it resolved that the mayor and council initially approve an ordinance authorizing the use of automatic traffic enforcement safety devices. I so move.
Second.
We have a motion of the second, this is discussed, committee of the whole. Is there any, excuse me, further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, extension, motion carries. Uh, Deputy Mayor Depot, R dash, R A dash twenty-three dash nine dash one zero seven.
Yes, uh, R A twenty-three nine one oh seven. Therefore be it resolved that the mayor and council authorize and approve an updated American Rescue Plan Act project list that allocates expenditures as stated not to exceed two million, six hundred thirty-seven thousand, two hundred fifteen dollars and sixty-four cents for the purposes of supporting emergency and economic impacts to the City of Groton due to the COVID nineteen pandemic. I so move.
Second.
We have a motion of the second, this was discussed earlier this evening. Any additional discussion? Counselor Piazza?
Just for FYI, um, and maybe those who listen, I'm assuming that R A stands for a resolution amendment.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, extension, motion carries. All right, Counselor, whoops. Counselor Sheffield, R dash twenty-four dash eleven dash one fifty-one.
Resolution R dash twenty-four dash eleven dash one fifty-one. Therefore be it resolved that the mayor and council rescind resolution R dash twenty-three dash ten dash one twenty-four. Therefore be it resolved that the mayor and council rescind Resolution R-23-10-124 regarding allocation of American Rescue Plan funds to be used for small business grants. I so move.
Second.
We have a motion to the second that was discussed earlier tonight. Is there any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Counselor, uh, Patterson? 152?
All right, uh, Resolution R-24-11-152. Therefore be it, the mayor and the council authorized a provisionally approved contract with Savaya Sun 612 Church Street, Amstun, Connecticut, for the quoted price of 100, 108,690.05 and a 10% contingency of $10,869.05 for a total project cost of $119,559.05 for rehabilitation of the City of Groton Police Department locker room plumbing to be paid from the American Rescue Plan Act Recovery Fund. I so move.
Okay, um, before we get a second, we need to revise this to, to include, and so, American Rescue Plan Act Recovery Funds and capital funds. So, just, it's not on there. We agreed to that here because of the contingency. So, and capital funds.
And capital funds.
Okay.
I so move.
Second.
We have a motion to the second. We discussed this earlier, uh, in the evening. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
We have a motion to the second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, we are adjourned. Thank you, counsel.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Next time I'll bring my charger. Ooh, it's warm.
All for yourself.
Oh, well, I do, I have two. I tried to cell phone a phone book.
And a partridge in a pear tree.
Five minutes at a time.
What else do you want to happen?
So for the last three years.